So we will call tonight's meeting to order of the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, June 2nd. And in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus emergency outbreak, the June 2nd meeting, public meeting of the Norfolk School Committee shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternate public access to this meeting is provided via Google Meet online. This application will allow users to join the meeting, provide comments during the allocated windows as outlined by the board's public comment policy. So if you wish to join, please follow the web link or call in the dial-in number listed below under the start time slash call to order. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast of the Norfolk Community Television. And as we start out every meeting, we will begin by reading our mission statement, which is the Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. We provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Madora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Ingrid Lardie.
And Thomas Doyle.
Sorry.
Ingrid cut ahead of me.
All right.
That's okay. I'll let it slide. Okay, so I don't know if we have, I know we have a number of folks joining us on here. Now is the time for a public comment if anyone wishes to make any.
Yes, Thomas, I would like to.
The chair recognizes Tom Kavanaugh. Go, Tom.
Thank you. Just on a personal note and on behalf of the Norfolk Teachers Association, I really want to thank both Jeff and Paul for their service to our community.
Thank you, Tom, very much. Great kind of you.
Thank you very much.
It's been, it's been an honor of serving with everyone and being able to represent the community. Thanks for, thanks for your opportunity and I wish everyone well going forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, I concur with Jeff's comments and I also found this to be quite an education.
Absolutely.
Best wishes.
I don't know if we have any other public comments? Okay, not seen any. So we will now move on to correspondence of which we have none. And then we'll move over to my portion of the event, which will continue with the Paul and Jeff are awesome recognition portion of the evening. So now I will embarrass them by reading things to them. So this is in recognition of both of them who, on a personal note, I've greatly enjoyed serving the last six years with, and I'm sure Madora and Jen will say the same thing. So start off with Paul. So Paul joined the Norfolk School Committee on May of 2014, served two consecutive three-year terms to the community of Norfolk. Vice Chair from 2015 to 2020, has also dedicated his service to the Budget Subcommittee throughout both his terms and served as Norfolk School Committee Representative to King Philip Regional School Committee in 2018, 2019. In 2017 and again in 2020, he represented Norfolk School Committee during contract negotiations with the Norfolk Teacher Association. Moving on to Jeff, like Paul, Jeff also joined the Norfolk School Committee in May of 2014 and served two consecutive three-year terms to the community of Norfolk. Jeff dedicated his service to the Policy Subcommittee for the duration of his two terms, served on the Budget Subcommittee from 2017 to 2019, and served as a Norfolk School Community Representative to King Philip Regional School Committee in 2019 and 2020. So, thank you both of you. I appreciate your hard work. I'll be ashamed to meet with you or won't be able to meet with you any further, but we can now get together anytime we want and socialize.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't have to. Thank you very much for both your efforts.
Thank you. And now I can't use the excuse to avoid anybody socially.
That's true. You're out of excuses now.
Is it okay if I share a couple of comments as well?
Sure, go ahead.
So I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation to both Paul and Jeff for the many years of service and for their continued support and encouragement that they show for our students, teachers, and all of our educational programs. Over the years that they've served on the committee, you've both seen some, us through some very challenging times, including a major roof repair project at the H.L. of Day and a roof replacement, the transition to universal free full-day kindergarten for all of our children, planning of a potential school expansion to accommodate enrollment growths, and now to the current COVID-19 health crisis. You've continually helped advocate for responsible and appropriate funding for the public schools and have helped us to build our capacity to provide rich educational experiences for students. You're both thoughtful and insightful in your leadership and ask questions that push my thinking and have helped me to grow professionally. You've both always been responsive and provided feedback and support when needed. I certainly wish you and your families the very best as your children exit the Norfolk Schools and transition to the next phase of their education. We do hope that we'll be able to have you join us back for a meeting in the fall when we're actually able to be there together in person so that we can acknowledge and thank you for your service. But I just wanted to say it's been a real honor and a privilege working with you both and certainly miss having you both on our school committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lardy. You've done a great job and we know that you'll continue to do that. So thank you very much for those kind words.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much, Ingrid. It was a pleasure working with you.
All right. All right, so that's enough of that. So moving on, we will now, and I'm actually gonna change this up a bit, is Paul, as we mentioned in his recognition, had been working with the NTA negotiating committee for the last, for this contract and the one prior. So I was actually going to make a motion because I had spoken or thought about this and even though Paul is obviously no longer to be on the school committee, there's nothing that would stop him from continuing his current role as being part of the negotiating committee. And I think it's very important that we keep some continuity with that continuing to go forward so that, I'm sure anyone else could jump on and handle and do a fine job, but Paul knows everything that's been going on as we try to get, get everything all ironed out. So I think it's important for the sake of the schools and everything else if we continue with Paul this, in this role. So the motion I would put forward would be to appoint Paul Cochran, non-school committee member, as, continuing in his role as a member of the negotiating committee. And it would just be for the duration of this contract, to be clear. So I would need a second on that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I haven't received my compensation package yet.
Check's in the mail.
The satisfaction of a job well done. I'm sure you'll find it invaluable.
That's all I needed to hear.
More quality time with me, so I think that's worth it. Okay, that probably didn't help you, but anyway. So if no further discussion, all in favor of the motion for Paul continuing his role as one of the negotiating members? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. And that is it for me. So then we're gonna move on to Ingrid's portion of the evening.
Sure. All right, so the first item tonight is, and it's in your packet, is the certification of the annual BIKO budget. Again, BIKO is the Bi-County Collaborative that we are members of. There are 17 member districts. BIKO provides special education programming for students that we are not able to serve within the district. As members of a collaborative, we get a discount for tuition rates for outplayed students. The letter in your packet just indicates that BIKO has certified a balanced budget. They are expecting $14,746,465 in revenue and they have the same matching amount budgeted for expenses for 2021. As a requirement for the board to be, be part of the BIKO collaborative, we have to present the budget certifications into the school committee annually. So, answer any questions on that, but it's a pretty straightforward, cut-and-dry budget. There's information in your packet as well about the member and non-member rates for each of their programs. That's on a separate case. Good with that? Thomas is muted and, and I'm having some technical problems. I can't see everybody on the screen. I can only see Thomas, so.
I can't answer for that.
If you have something to ask or add.
Sorry about that. That's not fun for anyone. I had no questions.
All right. All right, so the next item on the agenda tonight is we are required by policy to present the building use report. So this is the facilities rental. Here, you can see, as Todd mentioned earlier, we're projecting we've invoiced $11,381.25 in building rental fees for this year. We do have two groups that are, we still have not received payment from. One is a large amount, it's 3,300, but that payment is from CYO and they did send a check, but due to the closure, it appears that we are missing some mail. So they've issued that, we expect that to be in this week. And the other one, we are expecting $11,381.25 for a total for revenue for facilities rental for last year. Any questions on that one?
None for me.
Okay, all right. The next thing by policy, again, we also have to provide the school committee with a quarterly report of bullying incidents and investigations. So the last quarter of the school year, we were not in session. So from the time that we closed, March 12th, at the H.L. of Day School, we have had no reported issues regarding bullying behavior this quarter.
From parents?
Right, a lot of parents being bullied.
So we have no reported incidents at Freeman Kennedy either. So again, we haven't been open this quarter, but we haven't received any reports from parents regarding incidentals or of student behavior online that would require an investigation. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay. All right, the next item is a budget update. So immediately prior to the school committee meeting, we had a budget Subcommittee meeting and I updated the budget Subcommittee. At this time, as you're all aware from the last meeting, the Norfolk Select Board voted to decrease the overall town budget by $983,000. Of that $285,000 is coming from the Norfolk Public Schools budget. Prior to that, we had already been asked to reduce the budget by $30,000, so it's a total of $315,000 of reduction since our public hearing. The advisory board was reviewing the Select Board's recommendations and making a determination as to what budget they were gonna support at town meeting. After their meeting on Thursday, the advisory board has determined that they are gonna go forward with the same recommendations as the Select Board. So the budget that will be voted on and presented at town meeting for vote is, requires $285,000 of reductions from the schools. At this time, we have been working really hard to develop a plan for how we're gonna close that, that gap. We, as I mentioned to the Budget Subcommittee, we have a preliminary plan in place and I'll review that with the committee tonight. And it's only a preliminary plan when we are not going to ask the school committee to vote this budget yet because it hasn't been finalized at town meeting. That will happen, I believe the town meeting is scheduled now from 2024. So that will happen then and we are also waiting to see if there's any additional federal stimulus funds or money that becomes available. We did ask the Select Board at the meeting, at their last meeting, to vote to authorize, if revenue projections come in higher than anticipated, that they would restore budgets proportionally to the cuts that were made. So we wanna wait to get a better sense of the total financial picture before the school committee re-votes the budget. But preliminary reductions at this time to close the $285,000 budget shortfall, what we are looking at is eliminating two of the new positions that we were advocating for in the, at the public hearing. We will be reducing the $95,000 and eliminating the additional assistant principal position that we had budgeted for. We are recommending that we cut the .1 increase that we had budgeted for the team chair, that's $9,478. Because we closed in March, we were able to, and most teachers have already cleaned out their classrooms and closed up, we were able to move forward the summer cleaning schedule. That is going to allow us to eliminate $8,000, which we typically budget for summer help for our custodial staff in order to clean and turn the buildings over. So there's an $8,000 potential reduction for summer help. We're reducing the technology budget by $36,000 and that was for technology equipment replacement. We are hoping with the savings that we have, this, resulting from the closure, hoping to pre-buy most of the $36,000 worth of expected replacement out of the fiscal funds for this year. We're looking for significant cuts from each building budget, $9,000 from H.L. of Day, $9,000 from Freeman Kennedy. That will be for general supply accounts. The Mass Department of Education is indicating at this time that they are expecting school reopening in September to be a hybrid model and that we will only be allowed to have half of our student population in the building at any given time. We are hoping as a result of that, that we will see some short-term savings in supply costs, which will help us offset those two reductions. We are also looking at potentially not filling some technology subscriptions that we have or other things like scholastic news and other supplemental materials. Those have come out of the building budget reductions. We're looking for $5,000 of reductions from the special ed department. We are going to reduce the new curriculum adoption line by $20,000. That leaves us with a very small balance in that line of about $5,000 that we expect we may need if we have to remain on a remote learning platform for parts of the year to hold on to and supplement some of the online learning tools that we're using currently. We are not going to fill and rehire a tech, a .5 tech integration specialist for the H.L. of Day School. So we have a staff member leaving that position at the end of this year. We will be eliminating that position. We will be looking at a potential change to COLAS for non-union staff from what we had initially budgeted. We'll wait to see what that looks like on the town side and what the town is budgeting for, for COLA increases and we'll consider that recommendation at the school committee meeting. And we are also looking, at this time, we believe we're going to need to eliminate and reduce two non-educational positions. And with those reductions, we get to about $278,000 of the 285 that we need. We are also going to recommend at this time that we delay filling the assistant principal position at the H.L. of Day. We would like to go forward with filling the .5 curriculum position that Anita Mecklenburg will be leaving for ELA and Social Studies. We have significant curriculum work that we need to do in preparation for the school reopening and the varied schedule, but we're gonna recommend also at this point not filling the .5 assistant principal position. With those reductions, we get close to the $285,000. We, again, at this time, we wanna watch and see what happens over the summer before we re-vote that. We also know that we may be hit with some significant unexpected costs. The town does have some funding through FEMA that will hopefully offset the costs that we will have for personal protective gear and equipment and adjustments that we need to make to the facilities, thermometers, things like that, that are direct COVID-related expenses. The town also has CARES funding from the state. That's a million, it's just over a million, $1,054,000. That funding can absorb some COVID-related expenses that are not necessarily personal protective gear and equipment. So there's, the FEMA grant is really restricted to specific types of materials that they will reimburse for. The state grant is a little bit broader in terms of what would be considered an eligible cost. We do expect that we may see some additional costs for transportation based on the social distancing and the restrictions. We're concerned about our preschool program and whether or not that's a program that is run primarily by tuitions. And we are not sure that we will be bringing in the same number of students based on the new regulations. So we expect a deficit in that account and we use the revenue from that account to fund our teachers and our assistants that are in that program. So we may have some unexpected costs there that may or may not be eligible for reimbursement through the town, through that CARES funding. So because we don't know exactly at this time what those unexpected costs are, we think it's best to take that conservative approach and, and again, not fill the current assistant principal position that will be opening in case we have costs that we have to absorb in the fall that are not eligible for state or federal funding. So that's where we are at this point. Currently, based on this plan, we are not anticipating that we will be issuing reduction enforced notices. Obviously, things can change. The economic picture is very unstable right now, but at this point, we are not anticipating other than the two non-educational positions and positions that we will not be filling. We are not expecting to issue reduction enforced notices. So I'll open it up for questions or comments from the general committee at this point about the budget update. And again, I can still only see Thomas, so if other people have questions.
Ingrid, it's Jen. What are the non-educational positions being eliminated?
It will probably be from our food service program and it will depend on what that is gonna look like and what we are, what guidance we get from the Department of Education as to how meals are delivered. And we're not going to be able to have kids most likely eat in the cafeteria or gather in a large setting.
Right.
So we'll have to look.
Yep. And my second question is related to some of those tech, I don't know what you wanna call them, like the scholastic news programs. Is that something that you could reach out to PTO and, and ask? I just know my kids love that and I know we have to cut back, but I'm just wondering is there, is there other, other sources?
We certainly will explore that.
Okay.
Whether there's any grant revenue, but again, we may have other critical needs that we have to reach out to PTO for.
Gotcha.
So we're gonna hold.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so my anticipation would be after, the town will vote on the budget at the June 24th town meeting. After that time, we'll monitor things. We should have a pretty good sense by the beginning of July as to what the guidance is from the Department of Ed and exactly what our reopening costs might be. And then we will probably have to schedule a school committee meeting in July to reorganize since the election's been delayed. And we would probably not ask the committee to re-vote the budget until August, until we have a final projection for what the revenue is gonna look like. But I wanted the committee to be aware of how we're moving forward in terms of filling positions because we have to make those decisions now. That sound okay?
Yes.
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 All right. Okay, great. The next item on the agenda is the District Reopening Committee. So, as I mentioned, the Massachusetts Department of Education is going to be issuing guidance to districts as to what the requirements for reopening in September will be. As of last week, the department was initially thinking that they would give districts a couple of different choices for potential models. At this time, it is not likely and we are not expecting that school will, will start in September the way that we started last year. We are not expecting that we will be able to bring all students back. It looks to be that it will be recommended from the Department of Ed that we have a hybrid model, that about 50% of the students are in the school at any given time. They have shifted a little bit and now they are not going to be offering districts flexibility in adopting different models. They are going to prescribe one model for the entire state and require all districts to adhere to that model. The thinking behind that, and I think it's actually a good direction to go, is that we have teachers that work in multiple different districts. So if you're a teacher and your kids go to school Monday, Tuesday in one district, but your teaching schedule doesn't align with that, or the community next to you, kids go every other week and your kids at KP have a different schedule, it's, it's really difficult for families and for parents and for staff members to juggle. So there is the expectations of, there will be one single model statewide for reopening. It'll be a partial, students will spend part of their school time and school year in school and the other part of the school year, remote learning. As a result of the new guidance from DESI, there will be a lot less local discretion in terms of how that plan shapes up, but there are several things that the Department of Ed has left to districts to move forward with planning. And so we are going to form a reopening committee to start to look at some of those local decisions. The biggest one is the personal protective gear and safety protocol. Every district is going to have to put those things in place for themselves. They are going to be required to purchase their personal protective gear and equipment independently. There's been some push for the state to consider a sort of a buyer's club or the state purchasing and district buying from the state, but a decision hasn't been made on that. So they've advised us to move forward with procuring equipment and developing a local plan for safety. So the reopening committee will be looking at that. We also are being told that we should be prepared, that there will be periods of the year where we may have to transition back to fully remote learning if there's a spike in cases or a second, you know, significant number of cases in the fall, that we would have to prepare for that. So we're putting together a reopening committee and the goal of the committee is going to be to develop a comprehensive plan for both scenarios. So a comprehensive plan for what remote learning would look like over the course of next year if we have to revert to that, and a comprehensive plan for student safety and for what the curriculum and how we will deliver instruction in a partial hybrid reopening model. In order to try to get as much stakeholder input in developing that plan, we will have eight NTA members on the committee. That's comprised of classroom teachers, reading and math specialists, special education staff member, mental health professional, and a technology integration teacher. Our administrators will also be participating, as will our school nurses. We will be involving the Norfolk County Public Health Nurse as a consultant to the committee, also facility staff members, two parent representatives, the town administrator, and I'm looking for a school committee member who may be interested in serving. We expect that the bulk of the work will be done through remote meetings between the school closing, June 15th and July 15th. So we have a solid plan in place, probably two meetings a week, an hour to an hour and a half each. And we will be subdividing this committee into two groups, one that will work on the remote learning plan and the other that will work on the partial reopening. The entire plan will be submitted to the state, but we will also be reviewing it with the school committee. That's something we could potentially do if we decide to have a July meeting or at the August school committee meeting. So, questions about reopening? I'm sure there's millions or about the committee or I'd be looking for a school committee member who may be interested in serving. And you're down to three because two won't be back.
Ingrid, it's Jen. First, the packet from DESI models, is that open to the public yet or was that just sent to you and then you need to?
There, the DESI hasn't issued it yet. They're expecting, they initially were going to send us that guidance at the end of June. We've been pushing hard to try to get it out earlier because there's so much involved in this plan.
Yes.
So they had, I was on a call with the commissioner yesterday and they're expecting to release that guidance June 15th. I believe that once it's released to the districts, it will be available on the DESI website and open to the public.
Okay. And my second question is, the meetings, they be at night or during the day during, in the summer?
So the first planning meeting will be on Thursday from 3:30 to 4:15 and that's gonna just be an organizational meeting. After that, it will be probably, it'll be scheduled in consult with the groups that are working on each plan.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
That's, that's works. A lot of the work, Jen, I think will be done individually and in small groups and brought back to the whole with specific tasks and questions to answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that?
All right, so then we, it's gotta be one of the three remaining.
I'd be looking for one of the three. If, if, if it doesn't work time-wise, we have a pretty robust committee and I can also just share drafts with the committee and, and bring that to the full committee for comment in, in July and in August. I wanted to give the committee an opportunity to have somebody serve if they, if they were available to do that.
I'll do it.
I was gonna say too, I would be happy to as well. So, Madora?
Look at Jeff laughing at us.
I want both of us. I'll, I'll, I'll give it to Madora.
Oh, well, thank you.
As soon as it came out of my mouth, I'm like, yes, I'll do that.
I thought that was gonna be a two for one.
All right, great. All right, great, thank you, Madora.
It's gonna be twice a week between June 15th and July 15th?
That's my expectation, yeah.
Okay. But we're not, okay, okay, all right.
Some of it might be individual work, so it might not be a meeting and you might be doing some work on the side and then bringing feedback back to the committee, but that's an estimate of the timeline.
Okay.
Okay, great. That's all I have for tonight, Thomas.
Okay, thank you for volunteering, Madora, or being voluntold. I don't know how that really works, but.
I did it.
Yeah, good for you. All right, so moving on, I don't know, let's see, King Philip, do we have a report for them?
Yes, so we met yesterday.
Yeah, so we met yesterday. There was budget discussions was probably the, the main thing to share. There are concerns. I think with the chapter seventy funding that they could see depending upon the size of the reduction from the state, which won't be known until July as much as, you know, almost a million, seven hundred thousand to double that one point six million dollar shortfall, which they're not sure how they would attack it. They have tentative plans, but they're really kind of looking for more solid numbers on what the budget reduction will be from, from that regard. So more to come, but it'll kind of be last minute. Also, we talked about the plan for reopening and I think they were unsure what Mr. Zinni's concerns were. He said it would be easiest if either everyone went back to school or if everyone was remote. He said the, the interim of sort of some at home, some in class would be a challenge because we're already going to have budget reductions and any solution that you have, whether or not it involves transportation or juggling around is going to, in his view, cost, cost resources that aren't going to be there. So there was a great deal of discussion about that, but no real answers, I think. So that's, that's the main report from last night.
Thanks, Jeff. I think two points of clarification to you. So the King Philip as a regional system, their chapter seventy money goes directly to them where ours goes through the town. So the towns reduce the King Philip budget, not as significantly as the elementaries because they are going to get additional direct reductions when chapter seventy is cut. So if there's a ten percent reduction, that will come off their budget at the full ten percent because the state aid goes to them as a region directly. And the other two with a partial return is that even though it's challenging for us at the elementary level, if we divide a class in two, half comes at one point and the other half comes at a different point, it's much more complicated with the middle and high school schedules where kids are in different sessions. So you might have, you don't have the same kids in every class. So it's very hard to evenly split your classes.
Yeah, great point. So that, that was one of the things that was discussed is having the kids stay all in one classroom and have the teachers travel, but that doesn't really work in the middle school and high school model.
So we're all waiting for that guidance that, that's coming. And again, DESI is expecting to release that June fifteenth. And there will be specific high school and middle school guidance in that as well.
Ingrid, the communication you've gotten is that, that June fifteenth date is a firm date. It's not a moving date or do we feel confident in that?
No, they said June, originally it was June thirtieth. We pushed really hard that that's, I mean, for most schools, that's after school's closed and teachers aren't available necessarily to support any work. So we've been pushing hard to try to get that out earlier. The commissioner said today, they expect, originally it was the fifteenth. Now it's the week of the fifteenth. So we expect it that week, which is still earlier than. But we did get a guarantee that would be out that day, but it should be out that week.
Okay. Hopefully it's close to fifteenth as possible, but okay. All right, um, that's it, Jeff?
That is it.
Thank you, sir. All right. So then we need a motion to approve our minutes from our May seventh meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings from the May seventh meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Okay, so four, nothing, one abstain. And as Ingrid's noted a couple of times, so we're technically are, usually what we do is we'll meet in, in August and do not have a July meeting. However, that does throw things off a bit, given when the elections are. I don't know if we want to try to do something really early in August and sort of make it a quasi-July slash August meeting, and then if necessary, maybe have a later meeting in August. So two for the month of August. I don't know if anyone has any consideration about that?
The other possibility, Thomas, is if the election's the twenty fourth, we could have one final meeting in June. And that way I could at least update the committee on the DESI guidance. We should have it by then. I, I was concerned about August, whether the committee felt comfortable not reviewing a reopening plan until that late in school year. But I'm, I'm okay with either I can send you updates or we could consider meeting the last week of June after the election to do the reorganization and update on reopening.
I would be okay with meeting.
I'd prefer to do like the late June, early July kind of meeting. So we all have a sense of where we're headed and we can the, you know, the new individuals on the committee can kind of be, we can reorganize or whatever it is we do at that point and sort of have everything lined up for the beginning of what I think will be an unusual school year. So.
Agreed.
Yeah, KP is planning a meeting, KP is planning a meeting in early July. So if there is a representative, it would be good to have them in place by then. I think it's July sixth will be the meeting.
Ingrid, will we still be meeting remotely? Probably?
Yes.
Most likely.
All right, what is June, does June twenty third work, Madora, Jen? Everybody else?
Yes, I'm here.
That's the day of the election.
That was a trick question. I thought I'd make sure Jeff was paying attention. Good job.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
June twenty fourth?
That's.
That's town meeting.
Yeah.
All right, that actually wasn't a trick question. That was just me forgetting. All right, let's go to the third option here, June twenty fifth, which is a Thursday. I don't think anything's going on that day.
That works for me.
Worked for me.
That's fine.
June twenty fifth.
The proverbial third time's a charm.
I thought you left, Paul. Anyway. And then do we want, because I don't know how everybody's summer is going to go, but just do we want to also do something, put August date? We can obviously always change it, but just have that down, give a little bit of notice?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to discuss that?
Or do we want to wait for the new people?
Well, we have a majority here regardless, so I think seniority dictates we get to choose.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I was just thinking of being courteous, but. That's fine.
Say the eighteenth?
August eighteenth?
I could do August eighteenth.
That's fine with me.
And plus even for the new folks, I mean, that gives them basically six, seven weeks' notice. I imagine that should be pretty good. So, okay. So we're June twenty fifth, not the twenty third or twenty fourth, because those would be silly dates, and then August eighteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds great. The only point, Thomas, is that we'll have to make sure that the two new members that are elected get sworn in before the twenty fifth. So they'll just have to go to town hall and get sworn in.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah.
Be a problem because the election will be, that'll give them Wednesday and Thursday. Otherwise, they just can't vote.
I don't think they're doing that designated survivor swear you in at the middle school.
Oh, like yes, the last year.
Yeah, it's not, it's. Carol.
Well, even with the, even with the June meeting, if somehow they're unable to do that, I mean, that's basically reorganization. There's not a much going on anyway in terms of the agenda. So even if they can't vote, it's not the end of days. We'll be okay with it.
And I think we could arrange the Carol way to get them sworn in.
Yeah, she can handle it and they'll be able to handle, it'll be fine. All right. So then we need, if that's it, we just need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
I'll second. Oh.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Like that has to be recorded as Jeff Curry seconding.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it should officially say that. All right, very good. So assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned and thank you again, Paul and Jeff, for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Bye, everyone. Thanks.